This is the Public Works and Sewer Committee meeting scheduled for March 7th, 2019 to start at 6:30 PM. We're getting started a little bit late. Let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. "Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all." So, we have a complex agenda today. It has two items. The first is discussion and update on the sanitary sewer assessment project. So, let me start by just asking, generally speaking, if you guys could give us a status update for where we stand, and then we can maybe jump in with questions.
Commissioner, if it's okay with you, I'll give a very brief general overview, and then Roger can jump in based on his proposal and also on the status.
Please.
So, at the December Board meeting, the contract, the proposal was brought before the commissioners, and this was based on the previous meeting where the commissioners wanted to try to get some type of an evaluation, a handle on what we have in our system. So, Roger and I sat down and worked out a scope. The Board had actually said, "You two work out a scope that will meet our needs." I think we did that. So, you have to remember, the study is high level, but it is a planning tool, and it will be a valuable tool once it's complete. The criteria for pipe replacement was going to be age of the pipe, and the pumping stations, meter pits, and specific runs will be visited for a cursory inspection, but will also be evaluated by age. The main bullet points were, Gannett would use the township resources and staff, perform the condition assessment based on the criteria we just spoke of, provide a budget-level probable cost of replacement, update the township's GIS system with the sanitary sewer layer, and present the findings to the commissioners. This is just the first step. You may remember that meeting, I had said, "The only true way to determine the condition of a pipe is really through the televising of the pipe." But the Board didn't want to spend a huge amount on that. So, my thought was, we would put in money annually to do perhaps 10% of the system. Also, based on that age criteria, we already know that North and South Wayne, the vitrified clay pipe is well beyond its useful life. So, we're not going to waste time and money evaluating them line by line. We would pick certain areas to start if it so pleases the Board when the time comes for a replacement. From an asset management standpoint, evaluating the system on a 10-year basis is a good best management practice. This would be, if the Board wishes to proceed and do this in a standard fashion, in a good fashion, a best management fashion, this would be the first step to truly managing this asset throughout the township. It's not something that gets done in one year. It's over years in time. But where we could end up with this is in a very good place, to be able to truly know what we have, have good, long-range capital plans to at least present to the Board, to give you an idea of the magnitude of the work that needs to be done. So, I will pass that over to Roger.
So, in order to start down that road with evaluating your assets and coming up with the evaluation that Steve spoke about, you need to know what your assets are. And so, the first step of this report is developing that asset list, which is the entire sanitary sewer system and the pumping stations. We're in the process right now of mining a lot of that data and trying to develop that asset list based on land development plans that have been submitted over the years, where they've given us planted profiles of the sanitary sewers, some projects the township has undertaken over the years, and trying to use what information is in the GIS system and other available records that the township has. Once we develop that asset list, we will then develop, part of that asset list will also have the criteria of, "How old is the pipe? What year was it installed?" And then we start grouping that into sets where it's similar pipe type, or similar pipe age. Different pipe types have different useful lives, and we will develop a schedule of the useful life of all of the entire assets of the township with regard to the sanitary sewer. So, we're in the infant stages of mining all of that data now and accumulating all of the information so that we can combine that and start working on the GIS platform that will host all of that data. So, that's basically where we are now. Once we get that developed, and as we are developing, get more down that road, we'll start doing the evaluations based on age and useful life. As Steve mentioned, we can tell you now that there's sections of the township that are way exceeded their useful life, and they go on the replace list. And when we get some of the other data completed, we'll start looking at that. Some of those, we may want to go out on TV and take a look at at this point, if we have the funds in there to do that. Some we know are going to be good because they're fairly young in age and early in their useful life. And from that document, we'll then develop a capital plan of, based on, again, on that useful life criteria, of when replacements should take place. And from that, then the Board can decide what the next steps are with how you would finance that, or how you would move forward with undertaking that plan.
It sounds to me like, from what you're saying, well, let me start with this maybe. I've heard kind of around the building, the allegation that the plan that we're doing right now isn't going to have any value, that we're going to have to do something else in order to put shovels in the ground. It sounds to me, from what you're saying, like that is incorrect, that what you're doing will at least enable us to, if the Board chooses to do so, start putting shovels in the ground on certain areas, but that there will potentially be false negatives, in the sense that there's a brand-new pipe, and we just don't know that there's a crack in it because it wasn't televised and we miss it. We will, over the course of the next 10-year cycle that Steve and you have described, have to start televising those lines to find those false negatives. But it gives us the ability to get started with work today, or whenever you're done, obviously.
Correct. The next step after this, though, we don't go right from this report to shovels. There's some design that needs to be done after that, and bidding the projects, the normal process of any project the township would undertake. But this would outline that course of what's next, and it would be, basically would be, an impartial useful-life analysis of those lines where, you know, based on age. We're not going to do this in a vacuum either. We have Steve's resources and all the Public Works guys who've been, you know, in and out of these manholes and fixing these lines over their entire careers, can say, "Hey, this one's in bad shape down here. We have to deal with that all the time." There's a human aspect to this, too, that we're going to sit down and we're going to work out all of that. That's going to be part of the input also. But you're correct. There could be a brand-new line that's got a crack in it. That will be discovered the same way that it's discovered today. Lack of this report is, you get a complaint, you get a backup, you get some overflow, and the guys go out and take a look at it.
Commissioner, if I could add, so we're going from this very big picture, and each year, we're going to be bringing this down and moving forward. So, when we start to get to the particulars, we could televise a line that, on paper, is somewhat near its useful life, but when we televise it, it's in fantastic shape. And we say, "We're not going to, no reason to deal with it." Or, instead of replacing it, there's various methods of lining that pipe. That will be just as sufficient. Those are details that are not part of this exercise, but will be in the future. And as we discussed, so moving forward, all these things we're talking about, Roger and I are both very experienced in this, especially in the sanitary sewer world. And these are not groundbreaking, earth-breaking new techniques. This is really standard procedure, sanitary sewer, ownership, maintenance operation.
Okay. I just wanted to then resolve, because I think I understand you, but I also see a conflict that's between what the two of you just said, and I want to resolve it since we're in public. Roger says that we will be prepared after, and I said, "Shovels in the ground," but you're correcting me, and I recognize, we can't just start digging as soon as this is done. We need a design, and we need to bid it out. But we can get started on some projects as soon as this is done. Steve, you're saying that we would have to televise at least some aspects. I understand you to be saying, there are some places where we would want to televise. There are some intermediate steps that we might take at specific places, not across the board, though.
Right. So, if I was unclear, my apologies. So, we've already noted in here, the vitrified clay pipe of North Wayne and South Wayne, we're not going to televise. We're not going to study that. We know that that needs to be replaced. That's where we use our in-house knowledge, and we say, "We know we can get started here." Our public works staff, they know the real trouble spots, and we can attack that in a very methodical way immediately after this report. As Roger said, we need to do the appropriate things, design, bidding documents, construction. This is also a chance for us to address some of the pipes that run under houses and garages and past front doors that were installed 110 years ago. With that design, we can try to get them into their appropriate locations, and in some case, it will just be a replacement in the same spot. But there is a large portion of what we own that, yes, we will be able to move on very quickly after this. I apologize if I was unclear. What I was talking about was the pipes outside of that.
Okay. And then the last question that I come in with, and I guess I might trigger some others, want to hear the other questions that these guys have, but the last question I came in with was, "How soon can you give us a list of projects that we should consider undertaking immediately, essentially?"
Commissioner, I provided a 10-year capital plan for the, not last budget cycle, but the previous cycle. And that 10-year capital plan really focused on the areas we know we have these problems. So, my thought would be, we can get started very quickly. I would suggest we wait till the report's complete, redo the capital plan with some new numbers. Still, we have areas, even within the areas that we know we're not going to test because they're old, that jump to the forefront immediately, right? We're already looking at a line on Lancaster Avenue that is collapsing. We know this. It's not collapsed, but it's in bad shape. So, we're going to have to do that sooner than later. But there's other areas in North Wayne, South Wayne, that we definitely can get started on.
And nothing in this report is going to pull off the list things that Steve identified already as the problem child sections of the sanitary sewer system. I mean, the things that Steve and I have worked on over the years and that he's put into this capital plan that you've already seen, they're not going away. You know, they're not going to move down a list necessarily, once we're done this.
So, my frustration has been, or is a little bit, that it sounds like there is a project that is ongoing, that's going to take at least another couple of months, perhaps into the summer, before we get a list of projects that we should get started on. But on the other hand, you're both saying that there are areas that you know of right now that we should get started, or we could get started replacing, that will certainly be at the forefront of the list. Can we get some kind of interim report saying, "Here are the areas that are emergencies. We know that you're going to have to deal with them." I said "emergency." That's probably a term of art. I should maybe say, "They're in the most dire need. You will have to deal with them. Get started working on these, and I'll get back to you on priority number two through five after that."
Yeah. I can provide, I can update that capital plan from two years ago, which is the higher priority projects. We can update that. They are starting points. If it so pleases the Board to do, to fund these projects, the good thing is, we can do that in a methodical fashion and not just piecemeal. Let's attack this one. Let's attack that one. They're all high on the list, and they have been for years. With appropriate planning and funding, it would be good to address them and others in the same sewer shed. But we can, I can provide that list to this subcommittee. I'll take the list from '17, update it, because things have changed. Some things have come off the list. New things have come on, and I can provide that.
So, my quick, just a quick question. That 10-year capital plan that you put together two years ago, that I guess is still floating out there in the ether. So, we have, one of our, the meetings, the finance, the meetings of the Board of the Whole, on May 13th, we have the sanitary sewer public utility on as the topic item for that evening. Is that something that we might, I mean, I don't know, do you want to bring it back to this group first, or would we talk about it there? Because obviously, it's a plan that has already existed. You guys already seem to have a very clear understanding of areas where things are of concern and need to be addressed in the immediate. It would seem to me, we just really need to talk about how we'd fund it. So, will we just bring that forward on May 13th, or is that too soon?
No. If it so pleases this committee, I could have that for that meeting.
So, Roger, what's, when do you think you'll have a report? What's the completion date for your assessment?
I'm hoping in a couple of months. It's dependent on how easily we can mine a lot of this data and get this information from the township records and all the other places that we're trying to get that. So, I'm looking for, hopefully, what's 60 to 90 days from here? That puts us...
Like, May 7th? That's, we're talking about May?
Somewhere in May, May to June, I hope to have a draft, or at least have the assembly of all of the data.
And is the report going to be basically a map with each line and a description and an assessment age? What's going to be in the report?
If everything goes as planned, and the township's GIS system cooperates, it's going to be GIS-based data room, basically. But simplified, the output would be a map, and for better terms, a spreadsheet. You know, the output from a database, but it would be like in a spreadsheet form. And it would list manhole runs and condition, you know, size, type of pipe, age, and condition through that, and recommendations.
Okay. So, the map would identify the lines, and then you'd have a spreadsheet with each line with all that information, and the recommendations would be based on, that would be a separate text piece that goes with that?
It'd be a separate text piece, but it would be based, again, on that life cycle that we're talking about for the pipelines and for the pumping stations. And that'll all be explained in the report. It's not just going to be a map with a spreadsheet attached to it.
Because a lot of the things, like pumping stations, you can take a look at directly, so...
And we are. That's the plan. For the four pumping stations in the township, that's what we're going to do. We're going to actually go out and physically inspect them. I've already been to a couple of them over, you know, over my time here with the township. We'll talk, again, we'll talk to Steve's guys and the Public Works guys, and what are you having problems with. I mean, I'm sure you can appreciate, some of these pumping stations are 30, 40 years older or older. The most recent redo of King of Prussia was, what, 2003, I think, was the last redo of the King of Prussia Road Pumping Station?
We're working on the Gulf Creek one, you know. Isn't there a project right now?
So, we did a repair there, Commissioner?
Right.
I had, one of my capital projects was, so, I don't know how better to describe it, but three of our pump stations, I call the "Ugo" of pump stations. They're air ejection stations. They're pretty old. They're not, so the one over on, you had mentioned, the ultimate plan would be to replace that with a wet well submersible pump that works like a normal pump station, that's easily repaired, has better longevity, a better pump station, in somewhat the same footprint. And that's part of that capital plan, doing that to those three stations. I had a sizable number for King of Prussia Road Pump Station, because as Roger said, the last upgrade was 16 years ago, but there's actually building upgrades, safety upgrades, that are needed in that building for the sake of our guys that enter that, as well as replacing them with dry well submersible pumps.
And if you can appreciate, 2003 may not sound that long ago, but you get about a useful life of 15 years or so out of a pump with accurate, with upkeep and maintenance. But if you can imagine, you're not using the same cellphone from 2003, and all the technology and the control systems have changed drastically, have become more efficient, more reliable, and a lot of these, you know, just like you can't get parts for your Commodore 64 anymore, they're not, you know, there's a lot of these companies aren't supporting the control systems that are in these buildings. And sometimes, these guys have to invent something when something breaks. I mean, there's a lot of electronics. I've had clients that have had to go on to eBay to try to find parts for some of their pumping systems, and, you know. And really, that's not a position that you want to be in, because at midnight on Saturday night, when a panel blows, you know, you don't want to be looking on eBay. You want to have spare parts, and you want to have the access to that.
Right. I guess my only point with that is that there's a lot of areas that don't need to be televised, that you could be able to get data.
That's correct.
So, not only is it the data that's available in the office that you have from various sources, but also there's, it's not like, those are areas that you can look at without televising the line.
That's correct. Yeah, absolutely. And I don't recommend televising all the lines, because you have about 126 miles of pipeline in Radnor Township, and at 2, 250 a foot, or whatever the going rate would be to televise that, that's a couple of million dollars when you work through the system. And you really, the only, there's a benefit to televising lines, that you're on the fence of whether it's got a problem or not have a problem, and it hasn't gone past its useful life. But there's no reason spending that kind of money for nothing, to find out information you already know.
Right. Jack used the term earlier, "false negative." So, what does that mean? What would be the false negative? Does he mean false positives for bad, why do we call it false negative?
My interpretation, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we would say in our output, "Hey, this pipe was installed in 2010. No reason to look at it. It's in good shape. It's got another 40 years of useful life, but it's broken." And we find out it's broken by some other means. You know, this report is not going to look at the 2000, you know, at a 10-year-old pipe and TV it today and try to determine its condition. That's going to happen in the implementation of this program, in this asset management program, as you go forward over the next several years or so.
Right. So, I look at this report really as a tool just to help prioritize projects and areas of, that will be worked on to improve, to upgrade, to maintain the system. Now, with that said, it sounds like Steve already has a lot of that done. And I know we had a project, we, like, you talk about South Wayne and North Wayne, and those pipes are 100 years old, I guess. So, I know we had, Midvale Avenue was on, wasn't there a project?
Midland Avenue.
Midland, yeah, Midland, not Midvale, Midland. So, what's the status with that project, and should we wait for this report if there's things that need to be addressed now?
So, I would say, so Midland was, the sanitary sewer was one step, but now there's an, for lack of a better term, there's an umbrella project in the study that Melior is doing, as far as flood reduction in that area, from a storm sewer standpoint. So, the thought was to let them get further along in their study, because my recommendation to this Board would be, if we are going to do work on sanitary sewer or other storm sewer-related work on Midland, on St. David's, that would also be the time to update the storm sewer infrastructure. I know these are two unrelated topics to a point, but they also, they live in the same road, and that would be the time to do it. So, I didn't want to hamstring one project by starting with another. But Commissioner, there is low-hanging fruit in what, so, what we call the VCP, the vitrified clay pipe of North and South Wayne. Not going to televise them. We do get televising from RHM. There's a certain amount of work they do for us, based on our annual flows. We get work done. We have some of those tapes to go by, but we can, getting started in those areas is not going to be tough to do at all.
So, Lisa, when is our capital expenditure special board meeting? Isn't that in March? Isn't that...
To talk about this in terms of...
No, no, just our capex. Isn't there a meeting, we had the fire?
We have fire this month. Hold on.
Is it next month, then?
We have the capital, it's April 29th.
April 29th. So, Steve, for April 29th, I thought we would be talking about some of these priority sanitary sewer projects for that April 29th capital meeting for the special board, the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Is that possible, or is that not?
Yeah. I haven't spoken to the manager and the assistant manager. Whatever you, they need, I'll have for whatever meeting you need it for, from, based on my previous stuff.
So, Steve, your two-year plan, though, so what came forward to us this year in the budget, the capital plan, the five-year capital plan, that was basically unfunded, and continues to be unfunded, does that include your, these sewer projects, or is that something separate, and that just didn't come forward because you put it forth two years ago, and it didn't go anywhere?
A little bit of both. So, I'd like to take the five-year and my previous 10-year, and believe it or not, just in months, things have changed. We did have some emergency sewer projects that knocked a couple off the list, and we've had some other ones that have, no pun intended, floated to the top. So, I would take a look at that, as well as the previous 10-year, and come up with something, and however, whatever pleases the Board, the manager, the finance director, I can have.
And if I can add, I mean, the intent of this, and the way a lot of my other clients handle this, this becomes a living document, and you can revisit it every year, every couple of years, and say, "Where are we in the process?" And update it, and "Has anything new happened?" It's not, you don't stop this and put it on a shelf and then just say, "This is what we're doing for 10 years." I mean, it certainly needs a human touch to it to keep it relevant.
Yeah. I'm going to guess the reason why those two are broken out, Rich? I mean, this is the schedule set up by Bill White and Bob, because maybe the funding sources are different?
Yeah. It sounds like there won't be anything on this at that meeting, so. But I know that, you know, some of these projects Steve talked about, I think with Midland, it was, there was the issue with not only the sanitary sewer, but it's also the laterals, and, you know, what was going to be included. So, I mean, there's every project, but where we have 100-year-old pipes, and I don't know if there's a lot of those, if they really are 100 years old, I guess, you know, but, you know, that, especially in those low-lying areas that have high water tables, you know, just maybe we should get funding and, you know, take care of those right away. And I thought maybe that would be something. But it sounds like we're going to look at this in May, and then have a more focused discussion on just the sanitary sewer projects that'll be outside of capital. That was my question.
Because then in June, we're talking about stormwater, and to Steve's point earlier around the Midland project, and Jack, I know you've looked into this with the North Wayne piece, you know, are there areas of overlap that we could, you know, be doing stormwater and sewer at the same time? And how many, I don't want to put you on the spot, but are there many projects like that? So, if we're replacing 100-year-old pipe in North Wayne, or even on South Wayne Avenue, I don't know, where we know we are going to have, you know, some stormwater projects coming forward, are those things that...
There are a couple of them, and on Midland, we also tasked Melior with doing the utility management on that. There are, there is a utility that wishes to get in there. I don't want them to go in and put their new gas line where we're going to have a problem with it. So, when we're ready to move, they will bring them, we already met with them once, they will bring them back in, and that's when we can sit down and say, "Okay, storm sewer here, sanitary sewer here, gas line here, water line here. We all have to coexist." But there are other locations like that. And while I could have, I just wanted to add, so aside from, we are lacking in some ways, so a lot of townships that in previous lives, we had really good as-built plans. We don't have that at Radnor. We don't have some plan, we have some for some. We have subdivision land development plans for others that aren't as-built, but we also have another asset. So, Steve Amorant of our Public Works crew, he knows our sewer like the back of his hand, and there's that local knowledge where he can say, "It goes under that tree, or under that house, and it takes a turn that we could never find, you know, without his help." So, a lot of those capital projects and all can come from him. So, we have a good way of attacking this. So, the list you'll see is partly, some of that is that, but I'll have something for you folks.
Yeah. And there's plenty on Steve's list that you don't have to wait around. around for another list. I mean, it's, it's substantial.
Well, that's, sounds like all the questions that we have. Unless you guys have anything else for us, you're the only members of the public here, sort of, so I guess we're done.
I, I brought some closed-circuit TV recordings of pipelines I thought maybe we could go through a few hours with, sir. Now.
Hard pass.
I thought, I thought he was serious.
I think that might actually be cool to look at for five minutes.
Well, I, I guess the only thing is, if we're, if we're going to have, you know, some expenditures, which I think we, we should really think about the financing and, and really, this is, the report for me was to put together our capital needs for the sanitary sewer system, and so we can issue bonds and, and get a monetary source and have these projects that we're working on. I don't know, there's a lot of benefit with sanitary and storm sewer at the same time. Seems like a lot of potential for problems if, if something comes up, but, I mean, maybe it'll work out and...
Just from a planning standpoint, you know, from a planning standpoint, we don't want to do one thing that precludes an option.
And there's a cost benefit, too. If you're, if you're working in, in the same street, all the restoration happens at the same time. You, you go in and you take care of everything you need to take care of, and you get out. And, and it makes, you don't have somebody else coming in and, a year later, and ripping up your new street, or, you know, any other conflict issues like that.
The idea is, when we're done, road is paved, everybody's happy. They're not as happy while we're in there, but when we're done, we're gone for hopefully a lot of years.
Okay. Final, final? Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all.
All right. Thank you.